Good evening, and welcome to our budget meeting on January eighteenth. If you would kindly rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, thank you. All right, this evening, we're gonna be, we have Solid Waste, Wastewater Treatment Fund, Highway Equipment Maintenance, Building and Grounds, and Public Works Administration. And we'll be starting off with Solid Waste, which is number nine.
Nine on the urgent list. Mr. Chair, if I can have a minute before we start, please?
Please, yes.
I was looking at the schedule again, and looking at the meeting's schedule. And the way the month of February plays out is that the second Tuesday of February is February fourteenth. And that is when petition warrant articles are due. Petition bonds are due the Friday before, which is February tenth, February tenth. We have a meeting scheduled for February ninth. I would make a recommendation that the council change their public hearing and their budget review to February sixteenth, and the general meeting, which is usually the second Tuesday in the month, from February ninth to February sixteenth. So we do not have to have three meetings in the month of February, February ninth, sixteenth, and twenty-third. Most of the stuff that we would be bringing up on the ninth are gonna be postponed to the sixteenth anyways because of the budget hearing, and then the review of the warrant, and then the review of the default budget. So those items which would have been brought up on the ninth really need to be brought up on the sixteenth when we discuss the finalized budget. That would be my recommendation to the town council is that we cancel the February ninth meeting and make it February sixteenth.
Okay, that's good with?
And then the twenty-third?
And then the twenty-third after that.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we change our meeting on the ninth to the sixteenth of February.
Thank you. Any comments on?
I think the town manager just made sufficient comments on it.
Very good. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post or stand seven zero zero.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Paul. You like this? Tonight's gonna be a little different with DPW. For everybody at home, just so they're aware, our DPW director has resigned. We're in the process of looking for a new DPW director. Our deputy DPW director resigned as well. We're in the process of hiring another deputy DPW director. Our wastewater assistant DPW director resigned. We're in the process of hiring a new person to run wastewater. So tonight, it's gonna be a little different. We have the operations manager, Lori. We have foreman for Solid Waste, Chris, and we have the chief operator for wastewater, Leo, which will be here to answer the town council's questions. Lori and Chris can really talk about their budgets. I'll be helping Leo, and I'll be doing DPW administration as well as building and grounds tonight for the budget presentation. So without further ado, I'll bring Lori up, and she can answer any questions you might have. Overall, the budget has increased, but it's increased by a couple of major construction projects that we're looking to do.
So what are we doing now, highway?
Highway, highway, sorry. Chris, sorry, number eight. Bringing Lori up first, sorry.
Same Lori, I assumed, I thought the chairman was sporty.
Sorry.
Those were no, or just what was happening.
That's it. Well, I wanna get Lori out of here because I know tomorrow night Lori's gonna have a very long night if everything that they're predicting comes through. So yeah, so we're supposed to get some snow, so she's gonna be, she's gonna have a very long night, so I'd like to get her home and get some sleep. So, sorry.
Hi Lori. Good evening.
Good evening. Okay, so highway, not much has changed this winter season. We've had seventeen winter events, six plowable, and we've spent about nineteen percent of our salt budget so far. Things that may have changed in our budget. There's not much office supplies. We aren't spending as much on paper and ink and logbooks, so we brought that down from twenty-two hundred to fifteen hundred. Maintenance supplies, we are, we have a larger office building that we're maintaining. So that cost has gone up since our office space has expanded considerably. Other things are salt, sand and salt budget eighty-three forty-one. We've lowered our salt and sand quantities for next year in anticipation of our mag working. And we are beginning to use a stone sand mix on our gravel roads. We're getting a much better product this year on our gravel roads, so we'll continue to do that. Cold patch has gone up this year. We're expecting a hundred and sixty dollars a ton for our cold patch this winter, where last year was a hundred and twelve dollars a ton. Hot top has also gone up from sixty-nine to eighty-three dollars and seventy-five cents a ton. Other things that have changed are pavement markings in eighty-three fifty-nine, other outside services. Pavement markings has gone up considerably. We're expecting ten cents a linear foot, where just last year we were at six cents, so.
Is that literally just the paint that you?
Literally, yeah.
Put on the roads to separate, okay.
There was a shortage for quite a while on any paint, yeah. When the Texas, when they had that storm down in Texas, it froze everything in the manufacturing plant.
You gotta blame COVID as well.
Oh, well, yes.
The pavement markings, when, you know, it doesn't sound like a lot if it's like ten cents, it's eleven thousand dollars more.
Yeah.
Just to do our main roads, meaning DW Highway, Babuza Lake, all our feeder roads. We're not doing neighborhoods or things of that sort, just to get what we do now done. It's eleven thousand dollars more for safety.
Definitely.
And street sweeping too.
Street sweeping has also gone up.
Has it gone up solely gone up, or are we doing an extra run because of MS four?
We bid it out for a three-year contract, and each year he had a small increase, yeah.
So the frequency will be the same?
The frequency, yes, we do it. We're actually going to try and add two sweeping per the MS four permit. That's what it requires, a spring and a fall sweep. I have leftover emergency sweeping money, so I'm gonna use that to do the second sweep next year.
Cause you usually do it just in the spring, right?
We usually just do it in the spring, early May.
I just can't see any real accumulation except in occasional spots, I would think, but.
For the fall?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes.
Yep, MS four permit requires it.
Is there any way to quantify what it picks up the second trip?
We do quantify it, yep, we count loads and quantify the pile.
Be interested to know that next, after we have that.
Yeah, sure.
Barbara, if you'd worry if you have a second?
So that goes out to a contractor, right?
Yes.
See, you're all blurry.
At what point does it become more cost efficient for us to own the equipment and do it ourselves?
Street sweepers are extremely high maintenance.
Cause they're picking up a lot of junk.
They are, and they're, they're always in maintenance. So if you're down, it's not working, and if we only use it, we sweep with two sweepers the whole town in a month and a half. We would be sweeping all summer with one sweeper.
We did do it at one point.
We used to have one.
I remember, we got rid of it back in the nineties, I think, and it was because of the maintenance costs and the operations were so consuming.
Yeah, we had the sweeper for a while after that, but yeah, it was a very high maintenance with the brushes and everything that goes along with it.
Figured I'd just ask the question.
Absolutely. In eighty-three seventy-one, maintenance of grounds, the cost of seeding and fertilizer went up about, just about ten percent, so it wasn't a large increase. And those are the major items. Oh, nope, hold on, let me jump right over to eighty-five oh two buildings. We did add replacing one overhead door in the old garage per year. That's twelve thousand dollars. And then the updated fuel distribution system for one point four million.
And remember when we talked about that one point four million, there's an offsetting unbalance adjustment coming out to keep the fund balance right around that six percent.
When we get ready to do that garage door, that bay door, can you look into the fast ones? I don't know what the price difference would be. I know when we were doing the highway garage, they were expensive, but if we're doing one at a time, I don't know if it'd be worthwhile.
Yeah, well, definitely, when we bid it out, we'll bid it out for the fast door and the regular door.
So the doors broken?
They are in poor shape. Yeah, the bottoms are, they're rotting away and letting water in at this point.
Old building, the old building. We're talking about the old highway garage, not the new one. I just wanna, I just wanna, you know, I know, well, people are like, oh my, we just, no, it's not the new building. It's the old building, the one that's been there since nineteen seventies.
And you're saying you can't replace the bottom panel only, you have to replace the whole door?
The whole door, yeah.
Okay, cause at home I can replace the bottom panel, but, okay.
The last thing is the paving, which I'll take from there, is it went up eight hundred thousand dollars. And as you know, we talked about the SAFER grant, so that's helped offsets some of the money that we had, that we're receiving from the federal government for the SAFER grant for the eight firefighters that we put on. So next year, when they start coming off, the impact to the tax rate will not be nineteen cents, so.
Just be able to help make sure, I understand that's a public interest. We have a certain grant now that we're having for the fire department. Thank you.
For eight positions.
Eight positions, okay. But at a certain period of time, we're gonna be responsible when the grant ends.
Correct.
We'll be responsible. So what you're doing is you're building up our capacity, basically, by doing this, for example, for this year. So when the time comes, that money that we're using for other things are going to be focused on the fire department.
That is correct, and what we, the council decided when we did get the SAFER grant way back is that we use it for capital expenditure, one-time expenditures. We're not using recurring money items, these are, these are one-time. Last year, we used it for the, this year, current budget year, we use it for the eight hundred megahertz Hertz system to finish that project off. Next year, we'll be using it for paving. The year after that, we'll see where, where we go with, with the project and where we are with, when the individuals are coming off the SAFER grant.
So there will not be a spike in the tax rate?
Correct.
When we have to assume the payment.
Correct, and if we, I believe if we, it was around nineteen cents when we were talking about it, so we're trying to level that off.
Build up that capacity.
Build up that capacity, so there isn't that big nineteen cents bump.
Just wanted to reiterate that for the public.
Right.
Can I just ask about the difference between the departments proposed and the town managers? How did we reconcile, what did we decide to do there to keep that cost down?
In which?
In the paving, I'm sorry. Or the infrastructure, I should say.
Eighty-five oh five?
Yeah, eighty-five oh five.
Yeah. When I looked at this, we raised, we're getting about a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in for the registration, five dollar registration. Department had a hundred and twenty-five, so we garnered ten thousand dollars extra there. Kyle wanted, you know, two million dollars of paving plus the one thirty-five when he put the budget together. Looking at expenses and looking at keeping the tax rate, you know, neutral kind of deal, I lowered it to the eight hundred thousand dollars for the SAFER grant plus the one thirty-five. So the difference is roughly a hundred and sixty thousand dollars of paving money that I reduced out of the budget because we have other paving projects that are gonna happen too. You know, that, that happened along with drainage and things of that sort.
So, so we didn't identify a particular product or project that we said, we're just not gonna do. We just lowered the overall budget and said, we're gonna do as much paving as we can fit with this budget.
Correct, and, and you know, last year in two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, the paving budget, I had it written down, I'm sorry. The paving budget was only one million, one hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
So we're going up quite a bit.
We're going up eight hundred thousand dollars from there. So we're gonna get some more roads done, but.
This year.
This year. However, it's all based on the cost at the time. We're actually going out to bid right now to see handwork versus machine work versus curves versus everything. So we're gonna, we have a list of roads that do our PCI system and what New Hampshire Regional Planning did for us as well. Remember in the fall, we got that extra money and we went to their, their five or six roads? So we're comparing the two, and we're seeing which roads are in the worst shape and trying to get those paved based on our PA, our pavement condition index and what New Hampshire Public Regional Office told us as well.
Okay, thanks. The reason it spurred me to ask because it was substantial sum, so thank you.
So Paul, DPW asked for two million?
Yes.
And we're saying that at one point nine, this is a one-time only, and we'll drop back eight hundred thousand or some amount next year. So we're still way off of what they think we need to maintain the roads.
Correct, Kyle, Kyle's been asking for two million dollars for as long as I can remember. With a new DPW director coming in and a new engineer coming in, they'll be next year reevaluating what we need for paving, and we'll go with that. You know, we'll see what we can do. I don't know where we'll be at next year. We might be able to do the one point nine, we might be able to do more at all. It depends on where we are sitting tax rate wise. And usually, the paving line's always been the deciding factor in, in the budget, kind of. For as long as I've been finance director, that's, that was one of those lines that we always looked at.
It's one of the easiest ones to cut because it's a future issue, right? It's not gonna bother us today if we don't pay that, that section of that road, but it'll bother us tomorrow.
Right.
I mean.
Then we try to do our main roads and our feeder roads and keep them on, on a schedule to keep them in good condition. Some of the neighborhood roads, when we're doing those main roads or feeder roads, that's when we kind of shoot off to some of those sections. So if there's an area of town where they're off of a feeder road or a main road that might not be paved for five more years, we'll have to see the proximity because every time the paving company moves a piece of equipment, it costs money. If we can get them in the same area, that's why Dawn used to look at, okay, we're doing Amherst Road, we're gonna do this road, this road, this road off of Amherst Road, cause they're in the area. It's not that much to move the pieces of equipment. So that's what we look at when we do our paving bit too, is where the feeder road that we're gonna do or the main road we're gonna do versus some of the, the side routes, so. But next year, when the new DPW director comes in, that will be one of the things he has to look at and come up with a number that we can sustain going forward.
Okay.
It's a big draw. Does anybody have any questions for Lori, Lon?
Yeah, just because I can't make my own sense out of it. Eighty-one thirty-one health insurance?
Yes.
And I know situations change with whether it's single, whatever, or family, but that seems like a big jump all of a sudden.
Yeah, it jumped eleven percent was our guaranteed, what is eleven point what's on? Eleven point three, eleven point, what was the, eleven point one percent was our guaranteed max. So it jumped throughout the whole community. And Lori, you have how, eighteen people in highway? Eighteen, how many people do you have in the highway garage for employees?
Is, is twenty-nine of us total?
Yeah, all right, so about twenty, yeah, twenty, the twenty-nine including equipment maintenance.
Twenty-nine, three.
Yeah, so you know, what happened, what happens there is that we use an average across town. The way we do health insurance in town of Merrimack is we use an average throughout the whole town, so we take our hundred and ninety-six full-time employees and we average. Some people are single, some people are families, some people do not take health insurance. And we do an average across the board, and then we, we roll it out to the departments based on the number of people in that department. And that, but it was eleven point one percent increase, so it is significant.
Yeah.
Across the board for all departments.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Barbara.
So Paul, that being the case, we're still experience-based. So has our claims experience over the past year increased? Or is it just that, what's the increase based on, did they tell you?
It's based on a number of factors. Our, yes, our experience has increased from, because coming out of COVID, electric surgeries, elected surgeries started to come back and things of that sort. So yes, we're, we pay basically what we spent. So yes, our experience rate has increased as well because of coming out of COVID and people being able to see a doctor again.
Don't listen to her. Excuse me, does anybody, I mean, oh my gosh. Jimmy, you want my sweater? Not yet, but if she goes and touches that thermostat, I will. She had a big note, hot. So does anybody have anything further for, oops, Tom, did you have something?
I was just gonna ask you for a repeat on the discussion on the buildings. I mean, it, it looks like it says in here they went from zero last year to one point four million. And I'm trying to.
What number were you trying to?
Eighty-five oh two.
Yeah, so there's, there's three things that we were looking at. There was, in the current budget, they were not proposing anything for new buildings or buildings. What Lori said is that next year, they wanna start with twelve thousand dollars and start replacing the doors in the old highway garage for twelve thousand dollars. The one point four million dollars is that gas station renovation, what I call gas station renovation. We redid the pumps when we did the new garage. We didn't do the tanks, the tanks are at their useful life at thirty years, so we'd have to replace them. And we're starting to have some problems with some of the wiring and the conduit back and forth between the old highway garage and the communications. So it would be a total retrofit of the, the top, the pumps and the communications and new conduit and things that go along with that. We're estimating to be one point four million dollars, I think we got that quote last summer, so.
Yes.
Yeah, so, but, but one, but one point four is what we have in the budget to spend, and that's what we would spend, and if there's something that we need to do. You know, I believe that also included a canopy over the pumps. If we can't do the canopy, we can't do the canopy over the pumps. So when people, when they drive in with the trucks and things, they don't get rained on. But if that's the case, that's, you know, if we can't, if it comes in more than one point four, we're only doing one point four, and we'll start have to value engineer the project. And then the last thing was a brine storage tank for twenty-five thousand dollars. We talked about that at one of the meetings to reduce our salt and salt consumption on the roads. We're gonna go to a brine, which is the pretreatment, and that was the twenty-five thousand dollars. And that makes up the one million, four hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars in that line item. But yeah, this year, we weren't proposed, and this year, when I talk about twenty-two, twenty-three budget, we're not proposing any.
So are we going forward with brine in the future? Or is this still part of the test that we were gonna do to see if we need it? I mean, we're gonna spend twenty-five thousand on a brine storage tank. Is that required just to do the test about whether or not the brine really works, or?
Yeah, the system is actually, it's a brine making system. So right now, we've, we've got a homemade brine maker. It only makes two hundred and seventy-five gallons at a time. We need to make it in larger quantities, and this will allow us to do it. And this will allow us to do it. It also has a, um, a computerized system that tests and makes sure that we're making it at the right solution.
So we're confident that we're going to go forward with brine in the future and not
Yes.
Just stop this next year?
No.
So you've seen enough data already from what you're doing?
This hasn't been a great winter. Um, but brine in.
Depends upon your perspective.
Your perspective. This hasn't been a great winter to use brine.
Rain's not great for it though.
No, I understand that.
Yeah, but it's been proven in plenty of communities that it works. So I, I have confidence.
So it makes sense to go forward.
Absolutely.
Okay. And one more question. Does one point four million, is that something that's coming out of taxes or out of capital reserve?
The, the one point four million for the ga, uh, the gas station improvements, that would be coming out of fund balance to use to offset it. So we're taking that out of fund balance. Um, we had a very good year last year and with fund balance with revenues. So we're well above the cap and discussions with the council. Council wants to be around six percent. And that'll get us to about six percent by using this money for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Should be discussed more later.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Yeah, this is just curiosity. Eighty-three sixty-one street lights and eighty-three sixty-two traffic signals. And my que, my, my query and my questioning is everything else is, every other budget showing us an increase in electricity costs. How can we level fund those?
Do you wanna, you want me to?
I don't mean to put anybody.
No, 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 no. It's the LED. It's because when we changed over to LED is it's, it's changed our consumption. And those are fixed consumptions. So it's not like, um, it's not like a, a building where you might go up a hundred kilowatts in a, in a day versus those are fixed. Those are from this point to this point. This is what we charge you for consumption. So it's, it's a fixed price with that. And they're all LED now. So that saved us a significant amount of money. I think the streetlights back in the day were over a hundred thousand dollars. And when we went LED now they're costing us about fifty-three thousand. And I don't have a price on the traffic lights, but I know they were, they were, they're also LED, but they were more expensive to run.
Thank you.
It's a set, it's not the electricity they're using. It's a set price per light for the, yeah, it's what it was with the old mercury things, I think as well.
Yeah. And they were much more because they used a lot more juice.
Right. Is that a contract kind of thing also?
No, that's, that's just ever source outdoor light.
And then with the rates, I don't know how much they spiked for, for us in that kind of situation, but they, for most everybody else, they spiked substantially.
Yeah, I, I, I haven't seen the, the bills for, for the lights, outdoor lighting. Um, so I haven't seen a bill for outdoor lighting. So they haven't spiked as much as some of the other electricity bills that I do see come across my desk now. And the other thing too is we're also on a fixed rate contract.
Right, but that doesn't include these lights is what you said.
It, they're a fixed rate, they're X number of kilowatts based on that. There are not our seven cents a kilowatt. So it's a fixed rate of kilowatts that they use. Like the mercury bulbs, they said every mercury bulb was X number of kilowatts. What the LED is, it's X number of kilowatts and they calculated that. And since we're on a fixed price, that's why we're not seeing the big spikes.
Now I'm back to the original point, which is what I thought that might have been. Okay.
Yeah, sorry.
Uh, Tom?
So just to beat on that subject, if you look back at traffic signals, two years ago, the actual was four thousand. We had, we went to twenty thousand last year and we're keeping it at twenty thousand, talking about it being level. That's still a big jump up. What, can you remind us why that?
The
That's a good point.
The jump is in the maintenance item. It's not in the electricity item.
Okay.
Um, the maintenance is the controllers we've seen recently fail. Um, and when we're caught off guard, they're fifteen thousand dollars at a, at a whack.
Fifteen thousand dollars for?
The controller of the
Traffic lights.
Traffic signals.
Yep. Who's in the streetlights still in my head and that was.
Oh, so I'm good. All right. Those are those control boxes at every signal?
So we didn't have to maintain them before or?
We do maintain them. They were all replaced at, at the same, about the same time. And they started all failing at about the same time. And we have a couple more that haven't gone, but I'm anticipating them.
And they're fifteen thousand a pop?
Yes.
Thank you.
Everybody's good? Anything further? Thanks Lori. Um, if you just want to flip over to sixteen equipment maintenance. Which is the other department, Lori, overseas.
So equipment maintenance, um, again, very small changes. Um, the only things that we are looking um, to budget is eighty-five oh eight in operating equipment. We are looking to purchase an air compressor to put in the mechanic's truck to do on-road.
Actually, we are going to take that out of the shoes money.
We're going to take it.
Yeah, I noticed that was zeroed.
Yeah.
Um, the tire changer?
Yeah, both are zero.
Both are zero. Yeah.
Oh. Sorry.
Kyle, Kyle removed both of those.
Hard work.
Kyle removed both of those before they got up to me. He just didn't tell you.
I guess not. All right. We're not doing any. So what happens with?
We, we have savings, significant savings, salary dollar savings in, in highway where we've been running five positions down all year. So we're going to buy this equipment that we desperately need this year with that savings. And if you know anybody who wants to be a snowplow truck driver as a CDL license, we're looking, come on.
Come on down.
Come on down. We're, we, we're, we have the signs up throughout town.
We may see the impact tomorrow night, huh?
Yep. We're trying to work on a contract and get that signed, but, uh,
I think people need to understand that.
Yeah.
Be aware that we don't have the number of snowplow drivers. So we have to expect that there's going to be somewhat of a change in service. And that doesn't mean that they're not working as hard as they always did.
Right. With, with technically with five, how many routes do we have, Lori? Snow routes?
Sixteen.
We have sixteen. So usually we put three plow truck drivers on a route. So being down five plow truck drivers, that's really two routes that aren't covered out of sixteen. So, you know, but all the routes will be covered. I'm just saying is that
It's fast.
You know, when you have three guys covering, uh, a route, it goes by quicker where if you only have two.
Two.
You know, it's going to be a little bit slower because now we have to take other guys off other routes to, uh, to, to help. So the only good thing that I heard about this storm coming in tomorrow is that it's not going to be a two to three inch per hour storm. It's going to be a half inch to an inch. But if a route takes three hours to pave, there could be accumulation of three inches of snow on the road. So just be patient with us. We are trying our hardest to get out there. Um, like I said, I'm trying to get a contract signed, um, with a, with a, uh, third party to help us out. Um, on that, and I'm sure, um, we'll have some volunteers step up to the plate in the, in the departments as well to help plow if needed, if, if, uh, if it comes to that. So.
Not very good.
Right.
Do we anticipate any less work on things like fire trucks with all the new trucks that we have and stuff? Or is that not something that might reflect in the budget?
In the
We
Equipment maintenance?
We have hired a new equipment maintenance informant and he has changed, he's trying to change how things were done in the past. Um, he's trying to do a lot more preventative maintenance on equipment so that we don't get the major breakdowns. But with that, the trucks are being seen more regularly for, for repairs or checks or things of that sort. So, um, we should start seeing a savings in the future if this program continues. But right now we're still playing catch up to the way things were, where it broke, let's fix it. Now we're starting to see a lot more. He's trying to do a lot more preventive maintenance, especially with the fire department equipment. Um, so we should start seeing some advantages going forward. Um, the other thing is, is that the fire department trucks have been with us for a year now. So they're out of warranty. So if things break, it's on our repair dime, not on the company we bought them for. So, but that's why we're starting to look at preventative maintenance on some of this stuff as well. To try to keep those costs down in the future.
Thank you.
We're all good? I think you're all set, kid. Thanks Lori.
Thanks Lori. Good luck.
You weren't beating up too bad.
We love having you here.
Yeah. You can go wherever you want to go.
Solid waste. Start from the top.
Start from the top. Thank you for appeasing me and letting Lori get some sleep.
No, no, that was, that was perfect move.
Good night Lori.
Not that Chris or Leo don't need sleep, but.
He might be out plowing. We don't know.
That's right. Chris especially. Chris, just make sure your light's on.
There we go. Everybody hear me?
Perfect. Um, for the people at home, this is Chris Peralta. He's the foreman at solid waste. Um, he sits in the trailer right at the gate. So, uh, and then, uh, and then when he's not in the trailer at the gate, he's usually in a piece of equipment or running around trying to fill in for other people who are not at work that day.
Yeah, many hats, definitely many hats.
Super. Good evening. Um, fortunately, Mike, uh, budget is pretty straightforward. If you allow me, I'm just going to go through quickly some of the small changes. Um, right off the bat, the printing went up a little bit. If you've been to the transfer station lately, you know, they have a larger sticker. We're actually putting the plate numbers right on the stickers. That accounts for the, uh, increase in price. Fuel, of course, we're all feeling the effects of that. That's gone up across the board. Our dues and fees are pretty straightforward. They're dictated by these organizations. So there was a slight increase in the, uh, regional solid waste district. That's the hazardous waste days that Merrimack residents are allowed to go to. Uh, maintenance and buildings went up slightly. I'm trying to introduce a pressure washing program. Um, it's very expensive, unfortunately. So I'm trying to rotate it out. Where a building or half a building is done every year. And once that's maintained, we can just keep up with it throughout the, uh, the process. See, maintenance vehicles and equipment, we kind of went halfway on that. Uh, we have three aging pieces of equipment that need some, uh, repair once in a while. Uh, we're slated for a new loader and a new tractor in the next two or three years. And of course, our, our solid waste disposal, our tipping fees have gone up dictated by our contracts. The single stream, we decided to go with a conservative route. The one fifty per ton is a worst case scenario. It's a annual average. So for example, in this past year, at the beginning of the year, we were actually making money on our recycling. And then unfortunately, the end of the year, it's around a hundred dollars per ton for tipping fees. Um, again, demolition, the same scenario that went up a little bit this year. Uh, again, uh, special, special waste disposal. We allotted for a little more. The brush grinding, for example, is a big driver. And again, fuel is a big factor with that. Um, the nineteen thousand's been pretty conservative or pretty stable the last couple of years. And then finally, the elephant in the room is the office trailer. We started to discuss it before the meeting. The office trailer we have now is from two thousand and four roughly. And the whole edge along the scale side is starting to get punky and rotting. Um, we've tried to limit access through that door on that side. Our employees now walk around to the other side. And if you've been to the transfer station, you also notice that we use that window still. We started in the COVID pandemic. We've kept it up through the year. Just to limit people's access to the building. So nothing unfortunately would, would happen. Um, I've reached out for a couple of bids. It's in the eighty thousand dollar ballpark for a replacement trailer delivered to the facility. But there'll still be costs and switching over electricity, computers and whatnot. That's why the ninety-five thousand. I think that's it. Any questions?
And in the trailer, just so everybody's aware, if you haven't been in there, there's really no separation between work, our workspace and individuals that used to come into the office. They'd walk right into where we have our money. We have our, our, all our files, things of that sort. They would be walking in there to get their sticker or things. With this new trailer, we're trying to get that kind of separation space where we have our office and
Is it larger?
No, we're trying to keep on the same footprint, but it has, um, more doors and walls kind of separating off portions of it.
Yeah. So there would, there would be, there'd be an area for residents to come in and that would be the resident area to work.
This is a weird question. Does it have a bathroom?
Yes, it does.
You do not have one, no?
There is a porta potty behind the facility and then we also can walk up to the transfer station.
It's, it's a delicate question, but it's also important.
Yes.
In my opinion. So this new one is going to have.
Correct. Yes.
Couple of questions. So will you maintain the porta potty outside?
We have a outside service coming and maintaining it.
Yeah.
So we can probably eliminate that. We can probably eliminate that once the trailer's in place.
I'm sorry?
We can probably eliminate that once the trailer's in place.
You might want to look and see how many people are actually using it.
Right.
Who are visitors to the transfer station.
We could look at moving it into a
Yeah.
Better location than doing right there.
On the base.
Yeah, but there, there is some, there's some land up there that we can move it into a different location.
At the top of the old landfill.
There you go.
Flag on top.
Barbara, do you have some?
You raise a flag when it's in use.
It's vacant or occupied.
So on eighty-five oh two, stop. You're giving me a laugh. Um, what is the wireless traffic counter?
Oh, it's something we're thinking about implementing. Um, it would literally count the traffic going through the facility. We were hoping to get a, a sense for peak hours, um, a better feel for staffing issues, that sort of thing. And, and Thursday nights to see how, how busy we really are, if we should extend those out or shorten it up. Cause we did extend it out for the COVID pandemic.
On the, uh, on the structure, what is the life expectancy of that? Cause I know the one we have there now was used by the contractor, as I recall, when I built the transfer station.
That's, that's why I heard we inherited it. I'm not sure the life at the time, but I think it'd be a twenty-five, thirty year.
All I know is it was new to us when we, in two thousand and four-ish, when we took over.
Right.
Well, no, we didn't, we, two thousand and five, I think we took over the transfer station. There was a company in there prior to that, I thought.
See, because what I'm, I'm thinking, um, it sounds like you need, it, it appears when I look at the thing from the inside, you have two office situations going on, the scale side and the administrative side. Everybody goes on the back. Would it be better to build a pretty basic structure, um, for the long term or?
A base, a basic structure right now is, uh, very expensive. You know, you're looking at a twenty-four by twenty-four garage on the Facebook or on the internet, it's between fifty and sixty-five thousand dollars for something like that. The other thing is, is that the ninety-five thousand dollars, we will be putting up some, um, deflector, so to speak, because when the people drive over the scale or they plow with the snow and ice and you know, the, the salt that we put on to keep the scale working, it kind of blows into the building and what's worse for metal is salt. So there would be some kind of fencing put up so that doesn't hit the building. So we'd get additional useful life. We could look at building something over there, but I think for the price of ninety-five thousand dollars or eighty-five that Chris was getting is that, uh, that we'll, uh, that'd be the best bang for our buck. The other thing is, is that these guys up at the transfer station do not really have an area that they can eat lunch or take a break. They can eat lunch, but they're in Chris's office.
Oh, don't they have a place up at the recycling facility?
They do. It's, it's, it's small, but it's, it's
It's there.
It's there.
You know, it's, but at least this place will be not, it'll be upfront. It'll be, they could eat in those areas. Um, they won't have to eat in the facility with recycling or with, with the, uh, the trash.
Um, so it's the same size.
Yeah, it just has more compartments because
Just, it just, to me, it just seems like it's too small now.
At times it feels small, absolutely.
Or because the office has where the public comes in, if you're going to have bathroom in there, I mean, I but that's my opinion. If you think it, just a duplication of what you have is fine and that's your call.
I'm just concerned about the challenge. I'm just concerned about the challenges that would, that would face by doing a bigger footprint. It would kind of change the structure of how we conduct business now through both sides of the scale.
Yeah, it'd go out to the road more.
Yeah, it's my friend over, over back.
Unless it was longer and not wider.
Right.
But there is, you know, between, between those two doors, the front two doors, and going all the way back to Chris's office, there's some area in there that, you know, can be compartmentalized with, with a break room or, or an employee, you know, so they can come in and, and then the bathroom and, and things of that sort. It might be a little bit longer on the footprint if we do add the bathroom in the back, but we have room to add it in the back.
So that would be added.
You know, in the back.
That's what I'm wondering. So if you use up what you have, which is minimal for that, it's like you're losing space. But if you're adding it, that's a difference.
The bathroom, which is not going to be the Taj Mahal bathroom, it's, it'll just be, you know, edit a little bit of square footage and that's not going to make it wider. It just will make it a little bit longer when we look at those things. Yes.
We're in a roll tonight now.
Juan?
Yeah, having had the occasion to spend some hours.
Many hours.
Thinking about what we're talking about this evening. I agree with the assessment that as much improvement as you can realize with a new trailer. Some of the problems that we've discussed, we discussed back in two thousand and one, two and three, when we were putting that whole station together. One of the problems was septic for the office trailer, whatever you want to call it, area. But the rest of it, as I said, whatever improvements you can gain with looking at the inside of a new trailer, fine. We adjusted to it. I suspect your crew is adjusting to it now as well. And that would be my outlook tonight.
Very good. Anybody have anything further for Chris? Very good. Thanks, Chris. Appreciate it. Oh, go ahead, Juan.
Sorry.
You didn't move fast.
Eighty-three, eighty-eight special waste disposal. Is there a ballpark figure for revenue against that expense that the town realizes?
There is. Um, unfortunately, we, we pay by the pound charged by the unit. But in the, in his, in years past and historically, it's pretty accurate. It's almost a wash. We look at the whole program overall. Fortunately, it, it's, it's consistent. It's surprisingly consistent.
The only thing we do not get, um, reimbursed for out of that account is the brush grinding. Everything else we charge service for, so it is an offset.
Should be an offsetting revenue.
Uh, Barbara?
So where does the medical waste come in? Cause even, although you may not get much, cause I know there are several disposal areas, you know, centers in the, in southern New Hampshire. Do we pay for that when you have it?
We don't. The only medical waste we take now are sharps coming in hard plastic containers. Those actually go right in the trailer.
Oh, okay.
We, we have the residents see the attendants. We can go safely on top of the trailer where nobody's going to walk, but it goes to an incinerator.
Okay.
Or waste energy plant.
And when you talk about on top of the trailer, you're talking about in the transfer station.
Correct.
Floor itself.
Correct. Yeah, they either drop off at the office or catch the attendant at the transfer station.
They, they catch them, they take them, they put them aside. And when the trail, when they, when they get ready to take the hundred yard, hundred yard.
Correct.
Hundred yard trailer out, they'll put the sharps on top.
Cause that'll be burnt.
Because it'll be burnt when they bring it to the incinerator up at Pen, Penacola. Okay, Juan?
I believe we request the people who are bringing sharps to have them in a rather safe container and labeled sharps for the crew.
Yeah, that's correct.
They know how to handle them from there.
Yeah. Yep, very good. All right. You're quick. You can get out.
Thanks again. Thanks. Thanks for everything.
Have a good night, Chris. All right. Waste, wastewater fund? You want to do waste? Yeah, we can do wastewater, sure. So this is going to be a combination of myself and Leo. Leo's here to answer all your questions.
Sorry, Leo.
Hopefully I can answer all your questions.
Call the bus that you just got thrown on.
Except my apologies ahead of time for not probably being as well versed and as well ready as I should be at this time, but I'll do my best.
We'll, we'll go through.
Do my best.
It's all good.
Leo is the chief operator. Leo has stepped up to run our wastewater treatment plant while we're looking for a new deputy director.
Thank you, Larry.
Assistant director.
Appreciate that, by the way.
And, uh, he has a lot on his plate. Um, we're still in the midst of a thirty-four million dollar, uh, construction. And not that everybody goes down there, but if you went down there in the next month or so, you're going to start seeing some temporary trailers show up on site. Um, probably by March, our staff will be out of our building and into those temporary trailers. We're doing the lab upgrade. We're doing the bathroom upgrade. We're doing the front entry upgrade. So all of that will be, our staff will be out of our main building and then into these temporary trailers. Um, and that should be worked out and, but Leo's on top of that and keeping everybody safe and sound as, as they go and making sure that, uh, the, uh, the bonds that were passed by the residents gratefully are, uh, still on track. And we should be done hopefully what, uh, within two to three years, correct?
Uh, I think substantial completion is slated for sometime towards the end of twenty twenty-four.
So, yeah, so we're on track.
Something like that. Things are moving.
Yeah, so we're on track. So without further ado, we'll go over our wastewater budget. There are some costs that increased. Um, personal services, eighty-one hundred accounts went up about forty-seven thousand dollars in aggregate. We do have one set of individuals throughout all of these. Our teams through contract, which is our DPW supervisors. They're with, they're within contract and they're scheduled to get a three percent raise. Um, the next item is eighty-two forty-two, um, which is gas. And that's gone up about just over nine thousand dollars, um, for usage in compost. Um, some of our remote buildings are using more natural gas in the incinerated building. Next item is water, which is, I used to know all these numbers off the top of my head. I, I'm slipping. Water, which is eight-two-two, eight-two-four-four, um, and that went up about seventy-five hundred dollars and that's based on usage. Um, electricity, because of the new efficiency and equipment, uh, which is eight-two-four-one, went down nineteen thousand dollars because of when we're, because we're doing the upgrade. We're getting some new efficient equipment. We're getting some new equipment that isn't fifty years old in some of our pump stations. They're using less electricity.
Yeah, uh, the other thing we did recently, uh, this, the last three or four months, we had the skater programmer.
Yep.
Uh, do, uh, it was part of the, uh, energy audit a few years back and he suggested that we trim the dissolved oxygen content in the aeration tanks off of the D O meter. It wasn't set up that way. Um, and we've already realized about two to three thousand dollars in savings per month.
Very nice.
In electrical usage at the main plant because of that program. So we were al- always overshot a lot on the D O on the, putting more D O than we needed to. So that's, that should be a big savings.
Right, so we're, we're working there. Um, the next one is, um, eight-two-four-five sewer. Um, that is with the city of Nashua. City of Nashua is charging us thirty-two thousand dollars a quarter. And that's for our Penachuck pump station goes to Nashua. So they're charging us thirty-two thousand dollars a quarter for that. So that, uh, was a big increase. It was a sixty thousand dollar increase from what we were budgeting. They went up, their rates went up significantly. At the end of last year and to this year and to next year too, they're, they're projecting some increases. So that was a sixty thousand dollar increase there.
So just, just to help the public, that's not wastewater treatment plant sewer charges. That's.
Excuse me. That's not wastewater treatment plant sewer charges. That's for the Penachuck pump station. Correct. So that force main goes back to Nashua. They take that flow from, from the town of Merrimack and treat it.
Yeah, but that's coming from, from what area? Down?
Over by, uh, Penachuck Square, so where Georgio's is, uh, PC Connection, that area.
Yeah, Linda, Linda Lane out there, not Linda Lane. Uh, the neighborhood out in that area is.
Where the South Fire Station is.
Yeah, in there and then like Home.
Home Depot.
Yeah, that area.
That whole area down there.
Yeah, that area. And who's ever on sewer up there goes to Penachuck Pump Station and that goes.
And they pay our rates, um, they, they pay Merrimack rates for that waste. Do they not? Or do they pay the?
So we're, we're paying them. So we do have a flume. So some of their flow comes into that station and goes back to them. So there's a flume structure that we use to subtract out Nashua's flow from that total.
But your charges, your charges to those customers are Nashua rates or Merrimack?
We don't charge, it would be based on their flat rate, sewer rate if it's going there. So the.
Yeah, it's our sewer rate, I believe. But I'll double check that, but I believe it's our sewer rate.
I would imagine it is, yeah.
I think it's our sewer rate, but I'll double check that.
I never knew that this, that we had that. I knew we had water things going on, but not wastewater.
Wastewater goes out that way on Penachuck.
So I'm having a moment of confusion. So for those people that are on the sewer system with the Penachuck pump station, it goes to Nashua. Nashua charges Merrimack for that sewerage that's going into their system. But when we send out the sewer bills, we're sending out the Merrimack rate, which is probably lower than the Penachuck rate.
I, I would, honestly, I do not have that answer. I will get you that answer. I do not know definitively what the rate is, but I can get you that answer.
See what my thought is.
Yeah, I know. I understand what you thought.
Yeah, whatever the question.
That's what we're all asking.
Yeah, yeah. And I will double check that and, and we'll check that out. I will let you know.
Cause that is a huge increase.
Yes, it, it was, it was, it was, it was hard to swallow.
So to speak.
So to speak.
You said that.
Yeah.
We could have let that go.
But we couldn't.
So moving on, we're moving on to, um, we're going to go to chemicals. Uh, eight-three-one-one and chemicals. The chemicals went up about fifteen percent or about seventeen thousand dollars. Lots of chemicals to operate the wastewater treatment plant have increased. Um, polymer has definitely increased. More so than other items. So that's why we're going up sixteen thousand dollars because the chemical costs are going up. Our bulking agents going up, uh, about, uh, sixty-five cents, uh, per, per yard. Uh, a ton, and that's a five percent increase for fifteen thousand dollars. We use the bulking agents to make compost. And remember, we sell our compost. So, uh, the bulking agent is sawdust that we get from, uh, individuals and and that went up about fifteen thousand dollars. Other outside services, eight-three-five-nine went up about sixteen thousand dollars. Um, ten thousand dollars of that is for PFOA testing and water analysis testing. Um, to make sure that our levels of PFOA are consistent, what, what the levels that were set by the state. And then another five thousand dollars basically is for the allocation because of the time that is spent overseeing the wastewater department. Uh, last thing is on eight-five-oh-five, manhole covers, um, went up about ten thousand dollars. Um, and that is, once again, just the cost of a manhole has increased, uh, I think we do about twenty to twenty-five a year. And that's the additional cost of, of the manhole covers that we have seen steel. Um, you know, Build Back America and, uh, Buy America has increased our steel prices significantly for our manhole covers. And, uh, so that's about ten thousand dollars.
And, and why are we replacing manhole covers at that quantity?
Uh, well, as, as they get, as they do redo roadways and stuff, but my understanding is, is that we usually change out the manhole covers as they age out, that they get rocky and stuff. We're also putting locking manhole covers to stop the, the rattle and, and things like that. Not my, not my forte, if I'm being honest. I'm not usually in charge of that, but um, a- as roads are getting repaved and, and things like that, we've made it a habit to replace the manhole covers in those areas. Because they get worn, they get rocky and then people call and complain about rattling manhole covers and so on and so forth.
And the other thing is technology has changed, uh, to lift them out.
Right, well, they're safer for sure. So the hinged, the, the ones we're putting in now are hinged and locking. So nobody can open them, do any sort of vandalism. Um, and if you've ever moved a, a manhole cover, the old style, they're, they're pretty dangerous. I mean, you have to pry them up and it usually takes two good men by hand. Uh, there are lifters for that, but the hinged ones are much safer. So I would anticipate that hopefully we'd have less injuries, um, moving forward using those style manhole covers. They're just safer overall.
We have, I can't remember the number now, but I heard the number recently, manholes we have and it's thousands, as I recall.
Yes.
So I guess twenty-five years.
I can imagine we have quite a few.
Yeah.
And then.
I dodged them all.
And then the last item is the, uh, capital reserve fund, um, to increase fifty thousand dollars. And that's eighty-five-ten was a fifty thousand dollar increase based on the CIP going forward with, uh, projects.
Yeah.
Wastewater is, is a independent fund or some?
And then what we call an enterprise fund. Whatever they take in, uh, they have to cover their expenses. Um, so, um, when they, when, for every dollar they spend, they need a dollar in revenue and that's why we charge a fee, a user fee. Um, probably in the month of February. I gotta talk to them. We're gonna, they're coming back with a new rate study plan. That's something that was, uh, started back last year and they finished it. I read the, uh, I read the draft. We had some comments on the draft right around the new year and they were supposed to get those comments incorporated and bring us back a finalized document on our, our new rate study, uh, plan. Spoiler alert, there's going to be one significant change. The way we are doing things, uh, with apartment buildings.
With what?
Apartment buildings.
Oh.
How we are charging the sewer rates to apartment buildings, they're looking at changing that methodology, um, going forward. And that will increase some revenues, but it'll also be fairer for everybody on the system. Because if you have an apartment building with twenty units, they're getting charged one fee versus each unit fee. So they're, they're looking at changing that. Yeah. So that, that's a spoiler alert. So I'm going to get a lot of phone calls tomorrow from apartment building conferences.
That's a possibility. They, uh, are there any surprises beyond what we've anticipated in our, uh, as we put together the projects that's going on currently and.
No, actually, we just, uh, state reached out to us about the expansion project. Uh, Route Three, if you ever turnpike, and you remember, we have a, a twelve inch main carried, I won't tell you where, but from one side of the highway to the other. They reached out. Uh, we reached out to our consultants today with the information to see if, uh, see if what they plan on doing. They're planning on putting ten to twelve feet of, um, crushed gravels on top of it to see if our force main can handle that and, uh, weight wise and other things. So we, we've talked to our consultants about, uh, whether or not that's there, but that's moving forward. And some of the other projects we're looking at are moving forward. Hopefully in, when we have some of these projects in two or three years, the electronic components start settling back down. Anything electrical right now is very expensive. Anything with electrical component is very expensive. And we have seen that with some of our, as you know, with some of the quotes that we've had. You know, I think the screenings building started out at two point one million dollars and because some of the electrical components in it went all the way up to like three point one when we finalized and signed a contract and that was in a span of six to eight months. So anything with electrical components, it's very expensive, but we're hoping that that settles back down. So I think with the five hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we're projecting to put into the capital reserve fund for sewer, that's to take us to continue with our plan the way we, we have it. And I think in the rate study, they, they said that's almost sufficient. The other thing, the other spoiler alert in the rate study is that they're looking at, um, increasing the, the overall, right now, they, they were using a two million dollar floor. So they were thinking about increasing that a little bit, but, uh, not significantly, but increasing it a little bit. So that's the other thing in the rate study that they're going to be talking about is that floor, where that floor needs to be. thing in the rate study that they're gonna be talking about is that floor, where that floor needs to be. That's a, like, we have a fund balance for the town and we're at, you know, almost nine percent, a little, a little under nine percent. That would be their fund balance, because they, if they don't have the money, we'd have to shut down the wastewater treatment plant. So they want that buffer in there in case something comes up, unexpected emergency, so that would take that down one year and, and come back the next year.
Isn't that part of the reason we went up with the two bonds one year after the other?
Actually, three years in a row, yeah, because of the, to keep the rates. Just to maintain that two million dollars in the rate to cut consistent. So, uh, they are projecting increases, the increases are nothing that we didn't talk about, so when we were projecting increases back, when we were looking at the bonds, they're basically right in the same, same.
I was wondering if there were any surprises in that regard.
Yeah, no, nothing that, I was like, oh my god, you know, matter of fact, I asked them to switch two of the rates around. Plus they had the rate, you know, say a twelve percent, and a twelve percent which we were planning on, and then a drop like to five, and then an increase to ten, I'm like, why not move to ten, twelve, twelve, ten, then go down to five or seven, whatever it might be, so that it's not, and then you back up again, so it's and it plays into their fund balance scheme a little bit better, because at the time, you know, with the bonds coming due and things of that sort, so remember that we have to start paying the bonds when they become one year after substantial completion, so in two thousand twenty-five, August twenty-five, we'll have to start repaying these bonds, and these bond rates are locked in at incredible rates. So, uh, yeah, you know.
Compared to today's rates.
Yeah, you wouldn't wanna do it now.
Actually, the, uh, not to change subjects, but we just got our debt service, uh, bond bank, just went out on a sale. And I think the thirty year was at three point four, four percent, which is not bad at all.
Compared to what it cost everybody else.
Yeah, right, and, and, but I'm just saying that the rates for bonds in municipalities have not spiked as much as.
The inflation.
The inflation rates right now, next year might be a different story, but, you know, so we'll see.
Barbara?
So you mentioned about testing the sewer outlet for the, for the ET work, the Everett Turnpike work, is that what you were talking about? You were talking about putting so much gravel on top of it to test the weight?
Yeah, well, actually, um, in the Everett Turnpike, the winding project, they said they were gonna raise ten to twelve feet of, of gravels on top.
Yeah, but when I spoke to the guy from the state, because it was not something I had been involved with at all, and just kinda got the letter handed to me and said, can you, can you look into this, and so I started looking, I talked to the gentleman, and that was one of the main questions that he had was, is if we put this much go over your pipe, is it capable of supporting that weight, and so that was one of the big questions that they wanted answered, so Paul and I spoke. Uh, and like it's, like he was mentioning, we reached out to, you know, an engineering firm to kinda take a look at that and see if they, they can give us the answers that we need that the DOT is looking for. It may or may not be more complicated than that, uh, it, it really depends on, you know, the age of the pipe.
So how do they test that?
Well, it's not an easy way of testing, I mean, there's ASTM standards for that type of pipe, I mean, they know that a twelve inch ductile line pipe it can have a compressive strength of X, Y, Z, um, don't propose to be an engineer, try and sound like one, but
The real test will be.
That's why we would use an engineering firm and they, they would earn those numbers, but there are, again, there are other factors to consider, I think that line was put in in nineteen seventy-eight. So it's fairly old, um, and, you know, there could be some, some where there, it may be a situation where maybe the pipe might need to be cambered to make sure that it's still in good, good condition, but we don't know that at this point, I guess.
And, and the other thing too is, remember, since they're opening up the road, and we haven't talked to DOT about this, but if they're opening up the road. If we, if we buy the pipe. Lay it in and we'll do, we'll connect our side, both sides, you just lay it in for us, and it, it's all right now, it's sitting in a culvert on top of it, and it's attached to a drainage pipe. I, we're trying to figure out, DOT hasn't finalized the plans, whether they're abandoning that area or not. If they abandon that area, then we can basically have the pipe go back into where it is. If they're not abandoning that area, then we have to move the pipe, and that's what we were planning on with the five hundred thousand dollars in the Capital Reserve Fund. So we do have money set aside, either way, for, if we need to increase the pipe or, or do what we need to do with it. So, uh, that, but that would be some discussion once we find out from our engineers, to bring back to the council, to let you know what's going on. To move forward, and we'll have conversations with DOT at that point, too.
Wouldn't the manufacturer of this pipe know what they're able to do?
But like, like Leo said, it's all based on age, it's based on a lot of different.
No, no, I mean to replace it, uh, because if the highway's open, I don't know why we, I, I'm just, I don't know, I, I've not contemplated this before.
Well, the thing is, is if we're not moving the pipe, and it can stay in this box culvert that goes all the way under, they're not gonna be touching.
Right, no weights, no issue.
They're not gonna be touching it, so at that point, we can leave it there, they're only putting more weight on top of that culvert. If we have to move our pipe, that's when we have to get into these discussions about cost of moving the pipe and.
Right, but instead of hiring an engineer, if we have to move the pipe, why don't we just anticipate, unless that's some crazy cost prohibitive, which as a layman, doesn't make sense to me, cause the highway's open, you just gotta run the pipe, so I would have imagined, knowing that it's gonna be twelve feet below grade or whatever, that the manufacturer of the pipe, instead of hiring an engineer to do that, the manufacturer would know that, I would have thought.
I think DOT is looking for more insurances than just the manufacturer of the pipe. If something happens with it, they want to say.
The guy's stamp.
If in fact it needs to be replaced, they need to be able to present justification by an engineering report. Saying that you have to replace it.
Right.
They can't tolerate the problem.
All right.
Yeah, I, I, I think it's more, you know, it's, it's more of a DOT wants to be able to say, Merrimack, we gave you the opportunity to tell us this. You can't come back to us in a year when your pipe is broken or clogged, saying, hey, I gotta go. You know, come back, you know, this way, and it, it protects the town too. Saying, okay, we got an engineering firm with their stamp to say, yes, we can take this way to no, we can't take this way.
No, very good.
So I keep hearing people talk about the highway being open, what? The highway's always gonna be open for traffic, right, they're not gonna close it off and, and tear it up. They're just gonna add extra lanes, right, so.
Yes and no. The plan in, from exit eleven to exit twelve is a lot easier because they have the land on either side to do some of this work. However, with everything they're doing, there's certain parts of the highway that they're raising. And there are certain box culverts or that they're bringing across. So when they do that, there's gonna be some lane restrictions or, or moving of lanes. The highway will, you're, you're one hundred percent correct, the highway will be open. It isn't gonna be southbound, shut down, we can't go, it's gonna be kinda like when they did ninety-three. They'll move, they'll do one side of the road, move traffic to the other side of the road.
Right, okay.
So it'll be open, it just won't be, it won't be like what's up at exit thirteen now. When you come onto, uh, Pike, when they took down all the rocks, now you get three lanes of traffic going all the way up to, uh, what is that, two ninety-three up in that area, so it'll, it'll be a little different. It'll be like when they were doing that construction, they had lane restrictions and things of that sort.
Okay.
So, they're not gonna dig from one side to the other and say, okay.
Put your pipe in, yeah.
Yeah, we can't come down, the other thing is, is since we're talking about this project, is that, uh, both the Bedford Road, not the Bedford Road, the Wire Road and the Babuza Lake Road Bridge, from what I understand from my last conversation with DOT, are gonna be let out together.
Really?
Yes, let out together forbid.
So they could both be under construction.
Construction at the same time, from what I heard, is that a temporary bridge will be put in from Babuza Lake Road. Wire Road Bridge will be open, they're gonna build the bridge next to it, one side of the, I think it's on the, the northerly side. The northerly side, I think they're gonna be putting in the bridge on that side, bring the road into it, once it's ready to be opened. And then once the new bridge is open, they'll tear down the old bridge.
That's what they did down the Tinsbury Bridge.
Yeah, but that's what they, they're planning is that, so at one point, we thought they were gonna close Wire Road by Mallard Point, and by, um, basically right after Hillside Terrace. Close the road there, that's not the case, the road will be open during that construction. Tried to talk to them and say, so when do you think construction will be? Cause we have our Route Three Bridge. When I had the conversation with them, they don't think that will be an issue, they think they will be done by the time we start our bridge on Route DW Highway and Route Three. But, uh, that's what they said, but, uh, that is the plan, um, and you're gonna start seeing people, construction vehicles, they're moving the trailer for the construction project down to exit ten, and they're gonna reutilize that toll booth building. They're not putting toll booths back up, so please people, they're using that people as their construction maintenance. It saves the state X number of thousands of dollars by having it there, because they're still paying for Comcast, they're still paying for sewer, they're still paying for electricity. They still have oil in the tanks, so that they're, they're, uh, they'll, uh, they'll keep that, but you're gonna see a lot more
Makes sense.
Construction vehicles.
So we'll be hearing a lot of rumors, is what you're saying.
Yes, yes.
Do you see?
Did you see all that?
I heard.
Yeah, yeah, so, uh, but, uh, we're looking at several things as, as they progress, but, uh, that project is moving forward, and at least from exit eleven to twelve will be after the two bridges, that will be the next section let out, the last part of the project will be from exit eight to exit ten because of the bridge over Penetech Brook. That'll be the last bit of the pro, well, second to last bit of project to be let out, the last bit supposedly is tearing down all the all the, um, toll booths, the buildings, now that the toll booths are gone, when they had those little ancillary buildings, those will all be torn down as well, that's the very last part of the project.
Okay, you, you talked about eleven to twelve, you didn't talk about twelve to thirteen or twelve to to the, uh, toll booths.
I think twelve to thirteen is actually on the street, uh, now. I wanna think that state let that out, that, uh, if not, it's gonna be very shortly. That'll be the next one to be, you know, the bridges, but I think that's already been, when I say let out, up forbid, I think that was the plan when I talked to the gentleman in December, that they were in the process of letting that out as long with the two, and then the two bridges would be next.
Thanks. Not that that has anything to do with wastewater, but.
No, but it's all started because.
Leo didn't have any better to do than sit here and talk about.
And then the last thing, uh, in there is their, uh, their bond, uh, payments that they have. And honestly, their bond payments for their debt service, uh, they have one bond outstanding right now. And that was the phase two, um, compost and phase two upgrade of, of the, uh, plant. And that's out right now, those, those two was the only bond that they have out, um, that they're paying on. And we also have phase three, four, and five, substantial completion will start paying in two thousand twenty-five. So, and we did pay off the, uh, de-watering project this year, will be the last, last year we paid off the de-watering project. That's all we have to wastewater.
Everybody good?
Great.
All right, thank you so much for everything, Leo, appreciate it.
I didn't do that much. You have questions, call me.
I will.
I know you will, I appreciate that, thank you.
If you could just do me the favor and get that question about the, uh, rate for those homes that use Penetech.
Yeah, I'm pretty confident that, I don't wanna speak out of term, but I'm pretty confident that the the homes that from Merrimack go to that station is paying the flat rate like everybody else.
Yeah.
And, and the fee that we paid in Nashua is built into that flat rate. But I'll, I'll double check on that.
Yeah, good, that's for me, that'd be great, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, thank you.
Buildings and grounds?
Sure, seventeen? The building and grounds budget is, uh, pretty consistent and, and, uh, there's a couple of major things that are going on with the Building and Grounds Department, um, and it's mostly in capital projects. The, uh, there's a paving project, uh, for the church summit, uh, the church parking lot near Adult Community Center. It's on for gross appropriations of ninety-two thousand dollars. The town's portion of that project is only forty-one thousand, but since we have to gross appropriate, that's why it's on the, in the appropriations for ninety-two, we also have revenues set up for about fifty-one thousand dollars, fifty-one four eighteen. Um, and that is in eight, five, oh, two, uh, that is all part of that lease agreement that we signed with the church a couple of years ago, that, uh, to repave that parking lot, uh, it is starting to deteriorate, um, just remember that, uh, the people that use that parking lot are, do not always have the surest of footing. So to get that parking lot smooth and, and repaved would be a, uh, additional bonus for us right now.
It's kind of regional church you're speaking of.
Yes, yeah, across the street.
Can you amplify on, on the ninety-two thousand for the parking lot, you said because we gross appropriate, we have to do that, but it's not gonna cost us that much?
Yeah, it's not gonna cost, it's only costing the town forty-one thousand dollars, we have an offsetting revenue of fifty-one thousand four eighteen. The church asked, the church asked, they have some paving that they wanna do, associated with that. So we said, you know, yes, when we go in there to pave, if help them out a little bit, but they have to pay their fair share of it, and that's what their fair share comes out to, about fifty-one thousand dollars. For their, their portion of their paving that they wanna do.
Okay, so we're, we're assuming the total cost and then they're paying us fifty thousand.
Correct, to do it, yes.
So, so it comes in as a rent, it comes in on the other side.
Yeah, I just, it, I just don't understand why we're doing it that, but that's fine, I mean, I.
That way they get our price.
It just looks like we're paying for a bunch of money to, to pave the church parking lot, and we're only paying forty thousand.
Yeah, forty-one thousand, but because we're letting out the contract, we need to gross appropriate it. It's, um, similar to the eighty-twenty that we used to get for the, some of the bridge projects, we always put it in for the maximum amount of the contract, even though the state was reimbursing us eighty, eighty percent of that, it's just the way that, uh, the DRA wants these things accounting of it, so yes. Um, and then the other thing is, uh, a hundred and fifty.
The, um, discussion last week about the church street stuff, that's not gonna affect this at all?
No.
Thank you.
No. And then sprinklers, um, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for sprinklers. Uh, we've had significant leaks in our sprinkler system, uh, the system was installed in the nineteen eighties, um, we have a lot of pinhole air leaks, we had to upsize our air compressor to make sure that it could handle, um, because we have a dry system. So when we have a little pinhole, the compressors were running constantly, and they weren't able to keep up. We replaced the valves already downstairs in both, for both buildings, um, but now it's time to look at replacing some of the lines. Some of the black ductile lines throughout the building, Kyle got a quote, I think a year and a half ago, and it was two hundred thousand dollars. Um, we've done some significant work in some of these buildings, so I reduced it to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's a starting point for repairing some of the sprinkler systems, in this building especially, we've had significant leaks in the finance area. And, uh, it's been over records and file cabinets and things of that sort, that they had to come in and cut holes and to be able to repair it, so, um, the other building, we had a significant leak, uh, air leak, that is over the, um, over the assessing department in that area of the building. And it was, we were fortunate enough that the fire department caught it before the system activated and put water in. Cause if it put water in, we would have lost a lot of our assessing records, because it was right in our assessing file room. Um, so we had that replaced, so there's been some repairs that we've been doing, but we've been piecemealing it, this would be just to get as much of the mains and things of that sort repaired, and the, sorry, one other thing. The other thing is that some of our, um, sprinkler heads, because they're in the nineteen eighties, they're, they need to be retrofitted or upgraded, and we're not gonna retrofit sprinkler heads if we're not gonna be doing the lines in those areas, because it doesn't make sense to put a brand new heat detector, uh, sprinkler head in here. to put a brand new heat detector, uh, sprinkler head in here. Um, with, in a, in an old line that might go at any time. So that's what we're looking at, about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that.
So I, I don't really need a lesson and I'm sure you might not even have the answer to this because it's not your business either sprinkler systems, but when it charges well, there's, these heads don't have a valve that has to break it open because of heat or something before it goes, they just all flush. It's not important.
Honestly, you're right. It's not my bellywick. I do not have that answer. I just know that before I came in early two thousands, we lost, um, uh, sprinkler head in the lobby of the, uh, new town hall. And there was significant repair that needed to be done because the ceiling came down and it flooded um, carpets and things of that sort. But I can get that answer for you with it.
Okay.
And I, I don't know it, to be quite honest, which I, I have to call the guy, the gentleman anyways, for something else tomorrow. So I'll get that answer.
Great, thanks. Hold on just a second. Oh. Yeah, no, just, um, yeah, it was just type of sprinkler system, the answer was going on. Sorry about that. The, um, all right, I'm, I'm good with that and that was not real critical.
And I'll, I'll find that out for, for, uh, the tomorrow night's meeting and I'll let you know.
And the only reason I, I, just for the panic, I didn't, I thought it would charge with water, but I didn't know that the valves, the sprinkler would just run.
I, I just, I don't, I don't have that answer. Anything's possible with, you know, with these, these things, uh, you know, Monday night we had the fire department here a couple of times because one of our heat detectors down in the basement of the new town hall, uh, failed. And it was sending out an alarm saying, heat, fire, heat, fire, heat, fire. And the strobes were flashing and we found out that it was a faulty, uh, heat detector. So, you know, it's, anything could happen with some of these older systems, to be honest with you.
Sure, no, very good. Anything further on building grounds? Nope. Then we'll move on to
EPW admin.
Looking at seven.
So the biggest change in, in oh seven is the salaries for, um, the deputy director environmental. Um,
which is currently not, not filled.
It's currently not filled. You know, it's one of my four managing positions, EPW is not filled at this time. Um, we have had applicants apply and we do have resumes for that job. Um, personally, I feel I'd be doing the person a disservice to be bringing them in, knowing that I'm getting a new DPW director. Um, hopefully interviews by mid-February, uh, knowing, giving, you know, things of that sort. Um, to be bringing somebody in and then having a new boss come in on, on, and with a different vision. Um, so what I, my plan was is to, um, basically leave the position as, as we discussed at the time and, uh, see what the new director thinks is needed. I know what I need. Um, with EPA and N H D S and things of that sort. I know what kind of person I need for that as well as stormwater. Um, you know, we lost Dawn, who was the DPW, the deputy engineer. Um, and she handled a lot of the MS four work that this position and technical work that this position would need to do. So at this time, I'm asking to leave the position alone. Um, however, when we go to fill it, we'll fill it with the best that, how the new DPW director sees best to fill the position. Um, if we get somebody strong in MS four and he doesn't think that he needs somebody as high level, then we'll make those changes. Um, I'm not going to just hire a position just to hire the position. And really, that's what I'm trying to say in a long, about way. So I'm not going to hire a position and bring somebody else in that might have a different vision of, of the department. But right now I know that there are certain needs that I do need here in the town of Merrimack, and that's the environmental aspects of it. Um, especially with the P F O As and, uh, the, the states and the EPA changing levels. And now we have to test our wastewater on the backside to make sure that those levels are, are, we're not putting P F O A out. Um, and then, um, you know, even with our, uh, compost, we have to test those for P F O A. So that would be something that this person would definitely be looking to do. But that's really the main chain in DPW administration. Everything else is, is basically the same. Um, you know, it's just moving that position from an environmental, sorry, my computer's slow all of a sudden. An environmental coordinator to, excuse me, um, deputy director environmental. So that's the change with, why, why that went up.
Dare I ask, I think I followed you, but the eighty-one oh four environmental coordinator is different than the the eighty-one oh three public works director slash environmental.
Correct. I eliminated the, I eliminated the eighty-one oh four position environmental coordinator in this budget and moved that money into the salaries for the eighty-one oh three, uh, public deputy public works director environmental.
Okay, thank you.
Without trying to use names, the, um, salary for the director of wastewater was under wastewater before and now it's in public works administration? Or was it always in public works administration?
No, wastewater will stay in wastewater. The assistant director will be in there.
All right. Never mind.
That salary to run wastewater will stay in wastewater.
That's what I'm trying to understand.
Okay. Uh, more, okay. Um, is there anything further? Anybody have anything? No. I guess.
Amazing.
I know somebody's got. Barbara.
Yeah, under, um, eighty-four sixty? Nope, I'm sorry, eighty-four, eighty-five oh four. Computer equipment, two thousand dollars. Do you, are you buying a new one?
Um, the, yes, we'd be buying, um, probably a new, uh, unit.
What? Don't they have one now?
Yeah, but some of them are older. Like the one Kyle has is, uh, in Kyle's office is over ten years old.
So is mine.
Understood, but you know, when you're running CAD and you're running a lot of these high programs that, uh,
They need, need more ram.
Yeah, they, but they need more power too. So, uh, we try our best to recycle some of these down. But for some of these positions, they need a more powerful, more newer unit.
I think we're all sitting.
Wow. I feel we're missing something.
No.
Andy. I do have one question on eighty-two sixty cellular telephones. It's got a number three there. Is that the number of telephones that we have in the department that we're paying for?
We'd be paying for three, the director and the two deputies.
I mean, that works out to be a thousand dollars per telephone.
Roughly ninety dollars a month. We, we have a cell phone policy that needs to come back in front of the council because the current cell phone policy is a little bit outdated in cost.
Okay.
So we definitely need to bring it back in the next month or so. That's something that we will be working on. But right now underneath our current plan, it's ninety dollars a month reimbursement.
Okay, so these are, these aren't cell phones in the name of, of Merrimack. These are personal cell phones that we reimburse.
Correct.
A, a set amount to.
Correct.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Would be a good idea.
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be definitely interested to see that policy.
Yeah.
I think we had some conversations about that last year too.
Yeah, no, we, we definitely cell phone plans have become more competitive than what they were when the policy went in place. And I do have to say the policy goes back twelve years now. So we definitely need to take another week, look into it.
I remember when I was paying for minutes.
That's right.
You know, big changes, so.
Thank you. Should I wait another minute or two?
I can't run or else I'd be running.
Yeah, so.
We're waiting for Mr. Uh,
Are we done?
I think we have nothing else on the, on the agenda.
I have adjourned, thanks.
Motion by Alan. Second by Barbara. Any further discussion on motion? Send on all those favors, five by say and aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Seven zero zero. Thank you, everybody.